President Sisneros, it is Monday, November 10th, and we're gonna go ahead and get started with the Planning Board meeting. Board member Sahiba, do you mind leading us in the pledge?
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and just as for all.
Oh, God.
All right, meeting's called to order, let's go ahead and do roll call.
Yes, good evening. Let's see, board member Wang.
Here.
Board member Su.
Here.
Board member Sahiba.
Present.
Board member Ham.
Here.
And President Sisneros.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, and board member Ruiz is absent this evening due to illness.
Okay, great. Then we have agenda item two, any agenda changes from staff?
Nothing from me, no.
All right. Any non-agenda public comments, anyone in the audience here or live or online could speak for three minutes for anything not on the agenda? Do we have any speakers?
No hands raised, no speaker slips. We have one for non-agenda, Mitch Ball.
Okay.
All right. With construction on the Webster and Posey Tube about to begin, Alameda will likely be facing high-traffic congestion in the next few years before the Oakland-Alameda Access Project finishes. I work in between these two tunnels and often pass by the congestion that already exists when I bike to and from work. The city's made meaningful progress in enabling people to use other modes of transportation in recent years, from bike lanes to the water taxi, and vehicle miles traveled are reducing. However, there are still ways that people are being artificially incentivized to use cars, and the city can end these incentives by simply enabling enforcement of a 30-year-old California state law. For those of you who don't know, parking cash-out law has been on the books since 1992, but often goes unenforced like it is here in Alameda. The intent of this law is to prevent employers from subsidizing car use more than they subsidize any other modes of transportation. This law requires qualifying companies to offer employees who don't drive to work the ability to cash out their parking space and receive cash or alternative transit subsidies instead, equivalent to the cost of each parking space. This could be huge for individuals who can't afford to own cars or families who can't afford to own multiple cars. Additionally, for those who currently drive to work but could use other modes, this could be a great incentive to stop contributing to rush hour traffic and road maintenance costs. These people deserve to be properly compensated for the true economic consequences of their decision. Alameda just needs to do two things to enforce this law. Firstly, adopt a financial penalty for businesses that do not comply with this state law. The state law explicitly grants cities the power to do this. Secondly, change zoning to require new commercial leases have their parking unbundled and listed as a separate adjustable line item in the lease. This makes calculation of the cost of parking easy and allows businesses to save money by reducing their parking footprint. Additionally, it also benefits commercial lessors as it allows them to identify land unclaimed by lesses that is prime for infill development in the form of new jobs, homes, and property tax revenue. As you're all well aware, we have huge swaths of asphalt all over Alameda. Much of this goes unparked and is for all intents and purposes vacant land, but just hasn't been formally recognized as such. Unbundling parking is not a radical policy and is in fact already required of all new residential development in most of California. Alameda can go farther by requiring that all commercial and residential leases in Alameda, on development both new and old, offer only unbundled parking. It's not fair that tenants and employees who don't or can't drive are made to pay for parking that they don't use and don't want. It's a distortion of the market that encourages speculation of effectively vacant land. Unbundling parking and enforcement of parking cash-out law reduces car congestion, protects the environment, encourages new development during a housing crisis, doesn't have any high construction costs, and instead actually increases tax revenue and provides financial relief to the city's road maintenance budget, as well as Alamedans who need it the most and so should be implemented here in Alameda. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other speakers?
No more speakers.
All right, and with that, we'll go ahead and close the non-agenda public comment. Moving on to the consent calendar. I think we'll go one by one, since we have, it sounds like, various attendance for each of the meetings, so for agenda item 4A, the meeting minutes for May 27th, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the May 27, 2025, meeting minutes.
Okay, and do we have any abstentions, any absences in the day?
Well, yeah, you need a second. I'll second the motion.
And second, okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, and no abstentions, great. 4B, draft meeting minutes for June 23rd, do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Okay, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any abstentions or absences? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, okay, that passes. Agenda item 4C, July 28th, do we have a motion?
I move, I guess.
All right, and do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, any abstentions?
I need abstain, I was present.
Yeah, I don't think I was there either, so.
Okay, do we still have a quorum? We do, okay, I can't do math. All right, and that passes. Great, and then we have this Planning Board 2026 meeting schedule. I guess, do we just, if we have any issues, we could raise that?
No, I think it's fairly straightforward, it's primarily your regular schedule. There are a couple of, well, there's one meeting that's on a Tuesday instead of a Monday due to a holiday, and then we have our August recess, so there's no meetings listed there, and then we have the November and December holidays, so there's only one meeting in those months. So it's a fairly routine kind of calendar, this is just an opportunity for you to adopt that, and then it will be used throughout the year.
Okay, great.
You can always cancel a meeting or schedule a special meeting as needed.
Okay, great, thanks for the voiceover. Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the Planning Board meeting schedule for 2026.
Thank you, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, and no abstention, that motion passes. Great. And do we have any public comments for the consent calendar? Seeing none, okay. Moving on to regular agenda item, which is a workshop to discuss the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And, see, we have a staff presentation.
Good evening again. I'm Steve Buckley, I'm the Planning Services Manager, and I'll be making the presentation tonight. This is an update to the board on the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance update, which you've discussed twice in the past, in January and in May. This was just sort of a check-in before we go to the City Council to give them an update as well. There's a little more feedback from the development community, and we want to acknowledge that feedback and the work of the subcommittee, including city staff and board members and the consultant team. And so this is just sort of a refresher and update on some of the concepts that we're moving forward with the council, and then we'll come back to you with more specifics. So, as background, in January, we met and we talked about the scope of work and the concepts that were going to be analyzed, looking at the issues, and this was some of your feedback, that you agreed that there was a broad need for housing in Alameda, obviously, and that there might be a difference between rental and for sale, that we were going to introduce a more broad-based fee program, and that those should be adequate, make sure that they're adequate to actually fund units that would no longer be provided by developers in those options. You could either opt to provide the units or the fees, but the fees should actually cover, you know, an adequate amount of cost. That we might want to incentivize, in some cases, onsite units, and in other cases, note that units could be provided off-site in clustered projects, or that the fees might be preferable to kind of balance our approaches with public-provided housing, nonprofit-provided housing, and developer-provided housing. And so there was sort of this "all of the above" approach that was noted. And also a little bit of concern that buyers needed to be well-aware of what they were getting into in terms of the equity that they might accumulate versus the limitations that they might also face in terms of the resale value and equity sharing with the developer and the city. In May, that sort of same issue came up in terms of what are the programs for home buyers, making sure that all of the information was clear and upfront, that those needed to be real homeownership opportunities that would benefit those buyers. And we talked about kind of the ways that we would distribute the units through different income levels, making sure that those units were also fairly distributed around the project and around town, and that we could cluster projects, again, with nonprofit developers as partners. There was also more discussion about fees and how they would be calculated per square foot rather than per unit as a more sort of evenly distributed kind of cost distribution, and that we could consider perhaps some more local preference points, which I'll note we actually do have already for local residents, local workers, and school district employees. So, some of these things that you discussed were sort of already in the program, and some of them helped us refine our further work. Some of the context that we've been working under includes the Palmer Fix, which was a law passed several years ago, AB 1505, that talked about re-establishing inclusionary rental. There had been a period of time, about a decade, where inclusionary was considered a violation of the Costa-Hawkins Law, and so we were excluded from requiring onsite inclusionary rental. But this was reauthorized with an assumption, really, that 15% could be provided at low income or 80% AMI, is kind of a typical approach to inclusionary housing, and HCD has sort of endorsed this through the housing element process. So that's one of our baseline assumptions, is that's kind of a good ballpark figure to aim for. That was actually affirmed recently in the OABAG 4 Funding Program, which is an ABAG MTC program, region-wide housing and transportation and environmental program. And they also kind of set this baseline assumption, maybe 15% at low income is a good ballpark. If you go above or below that, you're gonna need to kind of justify that to us as feasible or infeasible. And that's become another standard, rather than a strict nexus study of what's the impact and what's the mitigation. There's also this other idea of what's a development project, a typical development project, actually capable of providing and without stymieing all development. So we're working under these two ideas of nexus and feasibility. And also a default sort of assumption of $100,000 per affordable unit, that maybe instead of providing one of those affordable units, they provide a fee, and there's a one-for-one kind of trade of at least $100,000 per unit as an assumption, and then you can work off of that higher or lower based on your study results. All of this is acknowledging the current development cycle that we're in with very high construction costs through labor, materials, financing, and land values. And so we're trying not to upset the apple cart too much, and so another one of our assumptions is just that we're trying to work from what we currently require, which is 15% distributed throughout a range of income levels, and what is kind of an equivalence that we could do that doesn't cost the developer anymore, also doesn't leave us with more of a housing burden, but try to kind of find some middle ground that's roughly equivalent. So that's the kind of work that we've been doing in the past few months, working with our consultant and the OABAG program, they have put out their own financial analysis tools. And so we've sort of been playing around with that to see, well, how do these numbers really work for Alameda? So we have our various income levels that are part of the program, right, the very low, low, median, and moderate, and they come with different income levels based on our area median, which is a countywide median. And so you can see for $160,000 household income, you would qualify as median income, your anticipated maximum rent would be about $3,600 a month for a three-bedroom, so a four-person household fits in a three-bedroom household unit. Similarly, you know, a three-person household would fit in a two-bedroom unit, is kind of how the calculations work. And then you have a sale price if you were to buy a condominium typically in Alameda. And so you can see there's a fair amount of subsidy on those sale prices. And that's one of the distinctions that we see, is the rents track kind of close to market in some cases. The sale prices really don't. And so we're gonna see a heavier subsidy on the condominium-townhouse kind of developments. And the rentals, there is a fair amount of subsidy at the very low and low, but the moderate really not so much, or at all. And so we're trying to adjust for those variables. So what you see is really different outcomes for the fees in particular. But what we've been playing with is kind of the rental inclusionary, starting with rentals, looking at, the existing is 15%, but it's distributed over three different income levels. And as I said, the new baseline from OABAG and from AB 1505 is 15% low income. So we thought, well, that actually does a lot for us, because the very low income is often provided by the nonprofit developers, they do very low-income housing. The moderate income isn't really doing much for us because of those income and rent levels. And so what if we just focused on low income? And so that is one option, and that's our recommendation at this point, is that that's a good starting point. Everyone agrees that's a good starting point. But, you know, why not have some options? We could have a sliding scale, or we could just have a couple of other options that are available. And so this is where we have some new numbers, I know we've talked about this before, but these are some slightly different numbers based on some new math from OABAG. And so we have a five-and-five split between very low and low, or we could go all the way to all very low income, and that would be 8%. And those, over on the far side, you can see the cost per square foot, those are sort of the inferred costs to the developer. And so they're all kind of in the ballpark, plus or minus 10%. And so that's kind of our goal, is to keep those equivalences. So right now, if it costs them $18 to meet our current inclusionary requirement, we could go plus or minus around that number. And these are calculated as a monthly subsidy per square foot of the project. So it's kind of like if you had a 100-unit project and they reach 1,000 square feet, then you have those sort of round numbers to work with, and you end up with cost per square foot based on that subsidy. So then if we go to ownership, similar math, but instead of focusing on low income, we could focus on the moderate income. And here, we're talking about cost per unit rather than per square foot. It's just another way of calculating it in those spreadsheets that we've been provided. And these are the cost at the time of sale. So rather than a monthly subsidy that's ongoing because of rental, you know, they're looking at their long-term return on investment versus condominiums, there's a one-time sale, and that's when the developer makes their money. And so they've framed the conversation around that one-time cost per unit. And so here, we've got some other options, and all of these options are less expensive than the current program, recognizing that right now, it's very expensive to meet our program with for-sale housing. So a little less, a little discount with this math here. And so we've got several options in our suggestion as well. We might prefer one over the other, but any of these would actually be roughly equivalent, so maybe all of them could be offered as options. And then we have the fee. So those were inclusionary requirements with a sort of rough cost estimate, but these would be actual fees that we would collect at the time of occupancy of the new buildings. And so our current fee is only available for very small projects, I know you know this, but just to rehash a little bit of the baseline assumption, it sort of works out to about $2,750 a square foot, which is, again, a fairly high fee, but in relative terms, it's kind of in the ballpark of most cities in the East Bay. And so we're suggesting that you could go a little higher or a little lower and still be in the ballpark of what might be feasible. We still haven't actually done the feasibility study, because our consultant told us nothing is feasible. I mean, if you do the feasibility study, very few projects pencil these days, so it doesn't tell you very much to get a negative answer for most rental projects. For-sale projects tend to be a little more feasible these days, and we see that around town, we see more townhouses being built. So we don't think now is a great time to do a feasibility study, but relatively speaking, we think that we could at least advance the idea of having an in-lu fee, and we might need to do more study to actually set that fee. But for now, we want to frame the ordinance and then have the fee set by resolution by the City Council at a later time. We've also talked about clustering before, and so, you know, we've come up with some of the criteria that would be required for a developer to propose a clustered project, which I think you've seen before and is in the staff report, just that there would be a sort of a review process that would have some criteria, particularly that we want to make sure that if we're just paying part of the cost of the clustered projects as a subsidy, that ultimately that project is going to be competitive for other funding so that we actually see those units sooner than later. And then we talked about the term of affordability being extended to the life of the project. So with that, I just wanted to give you that update, this is what we're going to be presenting to the City Council, wanted to see if you had any feedback of, you know, are we on the right track? Did we miss something that you really want to have presented to the council? So, that's our next steps.
Great, thank you so much for the presentation. Let's see, I think we'll open up for clarifying questions before we open up for a public comment. Does anyone want to start?
I have a question.
Vice President Edisa.
Thank you for the presentation and for all the work. I am wondering, in the term for affordability, is there a reason why you cannot make it in perpetuity?
I don't think so, I mean, I think 99 years is kind of meant to be, we also say for the life of the project, which is kind of in perpetuity, yeah.
For the life of the project, meaning as long as the building is standing, kind of?
Right.
Got it. That's it for now?
Board member Ham, I saw your...
I'll chime in on that as well. There is a rule of law called the Rule Against Perpetuities, and so you typically can't impose something in perpetuity.
So it's about the wording?
But a 99-year term is acceptable, and other cities have done that.
Right, but it's different to say a 99-year than for the life of the project, right?
Yes, definitely, and for the life of the project, I mean, a project could be 20 years, and then maybe they choose to redevelop. So that certainly is a policy discussion for you all to decide whether you, which of those you recommend.
So, in other words, it's kind of about how you word that part of the policy so that you make sure that is at least what you want it to be, kind of?
Yes, absolutely. And you could say, word it as, you know, 99 years, or the life of the project, whichever is more, or less, depending on the policy.
Well, whichever is more is what we're trying to look for, right? Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, thank you, Steve, for the presentation. I know there's been a lot of work and discussion on this whole ordinance, and it's a very complex issue. Bear with me, because I do have some questions, just because this is an area that I've consumed some of my time doing. First of all, in the policy background section, there's a sentence that says, "Concentrating the requirement at the low-income category better targets households with the greatest need in Alameda and provides the most public benefit for each unit produced." I have a question about that, just puzzling, about, really about the need. I mean, I looked at the housing element. Housing element certainly identifies a much larger number of very low-income units that are needed in Alameda, if you believe the RENA numbers, versus low-income units. So that suggests to me that very low-income units, there's a greater need in Alameda for those units, unless we have projects in the pipeline that will substantially satisfy that very low-income need. So can you clarify that sentence or maybe explain a little bit more?
Yes, thank you. I believe there is a good pipeline of projects, and I think that was the idea, is that there is, I believe, about 1,200 units that are managed by the Housing Authority, and there's about...
Talking about future needs.
Yes, yes, and there's about 200 units that are in the pipeline right now in North Housing, and there's other projects that have been developed as part of the Site A and West Midway projects, where there are still 500 units in the pipeline for various populations, including seniors and veterans and formerly homeless. So I think there's a diversity of needs, and I think there's a diversity of units already in the pipeline at those levels.
Okay, that kind of helps explain, because RENA certainly identifies a much stronger need for the very low income, so it's great that there's many of those projects in the pipeline. One of the things the staff report talks about is that ABAG, the 15% requirement for inclusionary units, you know? So I guess one of the questions, if there's an option, for instance, for, I think it's the for-sale ownership units of allowing an option, oh, excuse me, for the rental units, instead of 15% very low, and option two of 5% very low and 5% low income. If that option were offered, would that be considered compliant with ABAG policy? If that option were offered, would that be considered compliant with ABAG policy, as long as you also allow for option one? Just wanted to make sure whether, how definitive that 15% is.
Yes, thank you for that question. That's exactly our intent, and that's why ABAG produced those spreadsheets, is they wanted agencies to be able to demonstrate compliance through options. And so if you start with the baseline assumption, any other program that you might develop should be at least equivalent.
Equivalent, okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure. And one other question, and you've kind of covered this in the staff report, but I have a question, is we're proposing rental units to be based on per-square-footage, but for-sale units on a per-unit basis. I'm kind of wondering why, only reason why is the Mitigation Fee Act, for instance, doesn't apply to affordable housing requirements, but that state law requires residential units to be based on proportional size of the unit, and per-square-footage is what most cities are adopting. And the rationale for that is that, you know, a large unit, say a three- or four-bedroom unit, would not be charged the same fee as, say, a studio unit or a one-bedroom unit. So to remove the disincentive for smaller units, state law, at least for impact fees, requires a per-square-footage. So was there thought maybe of having the for-sale units also be based on square footage?
Ryan, could you go down two slides? Maybe another one. Oh, right, sorry. Let's see. There we go. Okay, so I may have misspoken or didn't explain it well, but the numbers that I had per-unit were the developer's cost of current compliance is about $10,000 a unit. That's what a developer is currently subsidizing across the project. So if it's a 100-unit project, it's a $10 million subsidy. It's a $100 million project, it's a $10 million subsidy. So that's a per-unit calculation. Our fee proposal, though, is per-square-foot.
Oh, okay.
So we're trying to sort of back into a per-square-foot based on average unit sizes. And so that's where the 25 and the 50 show up.
Okay, yeah, thanks for clarifying that. Kind of, I think I missed that point. And then I do have another question. I know that one of the things we're trying to do is, as a baseline, having any proposed, you know, ordinance amendments generally be similar to the financial impact of the current ordinance. I don't know, that was kind of one of those baseline working assumptions. So when I look at Table 3, does all of those options, options 1, 2, 3, and 4, does all of those options basically are about the same or less than what the existing ordinance requires for its financial impact? The reason why I ask that is that option 1, the all-mod option, is 15% mod, moderate units. But then you see, I think, option 4, which is called a high-mix option, is 5% low-income and 10% mod. So I guess my question is, is option 4 still generally equivalent to the existing ordinance's financial impact?
The Table 3 that you're referring to is in the staff report.
Yeah.
I've supplemented that table here for the presentation. I realized that it didn't exactly explain how that worked out, and so I've added the farthest column.
Oh, you added this column amount, okay.
Right. So the existing compliance costs a developer about $10,000 a unit.
Okay.
We're trying to stay under that in every case for ownership.
Okay. So all four options are still under what the current requirements are?
According to the model.
So the recommendation is, based on this model, is slightly reducing the inclusionary requirements for the for-sale units. Okay.
Yes.
And just to be clear, I know there's discussion of new fees for non-residential projects. We're not touching those as part of the ordinance amendments, right?
That's right.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure. And let's see. One of my last questions is, in reviewing the letters that we receive, which I appreciate the feedback that we're getting from the development community, I think some of the letters mentioned that some cities have actually reduced their inclusionary housing ordinance fees. And I guess my question is, to what extent is staff finding that to be true? Or, given the economic times, is it more that cities are just temporarily reducing them to respect, to allow projects to move forward during these more difficult economic times, but the ordinance requirements remain the same? I'm just kind of wondering what you found when you've checked in with other cities.
Yeah, I think anecdotally, throughout my career, I've seen cities reduce fees during downtimes. The challenge is to know when to reduce them and when to bring them back up to standard levels, because you're always sort of chasing the market, and, you know, governments are notoriously slow at doing that. And so it has its place, and I think the other consideration is just, is that really the deciding factor that will spur development? It's certainly one.
Yeah.
And so it may not result in a complete turnaround, but it might help some of the recovery.
Yeah, no, I agree. And I have some thoughts about that that I can share later. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'm so sorry, no, I'm supposed to take a step back and make space for others, but I did have like a burning, like, follow-up question. It seems like a really weird one, but I'm wondering if, like, you've seen, like, other cities, maybe, I think of like adjusting to inflation, you know, so that the fee is set, and then when the market is great, it's at one rate, and when it's doing bad, like, almost like reverse CPI. So I'm just throwing it out there as, like, you don't have to respond right now. I do want to get to others' questions, but I'm just going to plant that seed. Board Member Sahiba.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation on this. I did have a question. You described that, you know, currently there won't be a feasibility study done on the current state because of the results of that feasibility study. But how did we, how was it determined, the $25 square foot and $50 square foot fee structure? What was in the in-lu fee options? How did those numbers come about? I'm just curious.
Yeah, so we've talked about sort of the policy options of, do you encourage fee payment or encourage unit provision? And assuming that that's more of a policy discussion than a technical one, once you're sort of dealing in the realm of reasonable ranges, what we see is that currently a developer is paying about $17.50 a square foot for a rental project to comply with our current requirements. If we raise that equivalence in our policy, we raise that equivalence to 25, they're less likely to pay the fee. There may be cases where they'd pay the fee just because it's easier, but they're more likely to provide the units. And that was a policy direction that we heard, that we wanted onsite units in these projects. I think for the for-sale units, we adjusted the other direction. If currently it costs about $62 a square foot for a condo developer to comply with the current inclusionary, we thought, well, maybe we can encourage a little more fee payment and fewer units, or just recognizing that that's a really big number at $62. Maybe that's just too much, and we could ratchet it down a little bit. So these are round numbers. They're not precise in any way. They're just sort of round numbers of that policy balancing of higher or lower.
Just a follow-up question, but the recommendation is these precise numbers, though, right? Or are you saying they're just an indicator of the direction that the numbers want, that is being recommended, that the numbers move in, but the order of magnitude of that movement is reflected in this, or is still to be determined?
I'd say it's the latter. I think it's an indication of a policy direction. We're not recommending that anyone set a fee today or in the very near future, because we still need to work out what is the ordinance, how is it established?
Right.
And then the council would ultimately probably adopt a separate resolution and base that on other findings.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Board Member Wayne.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the presentation. I've got a question about the TOC in-lu fee that you presented in one of your earlier slides. I think that was the first time I had seen that. So our proposed in-lu fee structure currently is that it would be applied against all residential square footage in a building, right? So it would essentially be all leasable or saleable or habitable square footage in the entire building. But I think what I'm seeing here on the TOC is that the default in-lu fee structure is that it's $100,000 per affordable unit not provided. So it's a different basis from how our in-lu fee is structured, right?
So it's an interesting, yeah, baseline. They said you should set a per-square-foot fee because it adjusts with unit sizes more equitably, so it's spread across the whole project. So you might have some studios and three bedrooms, and those fees are just per-square-foot. What they're saying, though, is we want you to at least collect, as a result of that, based on your average square foot of your average project, at least $100,000. So they have a spreadsheet where you figure that out. And so you could plug in a particular project or a model project, and we just did a model project.
Okay. And I'm just noting that our fee is against the entire building, whereas this is, this one is against affordable units not provided. So it would be essentially the 15% that you aren't providing as BMR.
It's not quite that simple. So because they take the 15%, they have, depending on what price point you're trying to hit and how many percentages they back into, what the net fee should be to get $100,000 per unit. So it's, it depends on what your program is. If you're only requiring 10% inclusionary, you're going to have a different per-square-foot fee. And if you're requiring 20% inclusionary, you're going to have a different per-square-foot fee. It's because you're trying to hit a different result.
Okay, but high level, it's, the result is meant to be equivalent to what's on the screen here. Okay.
Yeah, at least.
Okay, at least.
Yeah. And the theory behind that $100,000 is that you would then leverage that with a nonprofit developer or a local, or a, you know, city agency to accumulate other grant funds, tax credits, and, you know, rent credits, and essentially come up with $700,000 or, you know, a million dollars to build a new unit that would be that equivalent inclusionary unit.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense. I mean, what I was keying into here is something we can get into, I guess, during the commentary section, is I sort of did a bit of napkin math and applied this to a very simple, like, 100-unit project, and this seems to come out lower than our proposed $25 per net square foot. So I'm just noting the difference between their sort of minimum threshold and the number that we're recommending right now. Another question I had was, having watched the discussion from the May workshop, I did like Board Member Su's idea of addressing some of the moderate-income housing that hasn't been leasing up, that's currently on the market. So I'm just wondering if you've been able to explore that concept any further, and just think about, thinking about how you might mature that at an implementation level.
Yeah, we've actually been in conversation with one of those property owner developers, and unfortunately, right now, the ordinance that we have in place doesn't empower anyone to actually do that trade-off. And so we wanted to actually bring forward an amendment to the ordinance, maybe sooner than later, to allow that sort of trade-off, and then perhaps use one of these spreadsheets or some other tool to figure out what that equivalence would be, so that they could fill those units sooner.
Okay, so in other words, rather than include that amendment in the current update to the inclusionary housing ordinance, you're considering a kind of strategic amendment to the current ordinance to try to move these units faster?
That would be another way to do it, yeah. And that would free up, again, say they have 10 vacant units, we might get some number of VLI, some number of LI, and then they would still retain some market rate out of those 10.
Yeah.
To make up the difference.
Yeah, okay. This next question is responding to some comments that we got in our correspondence. I was curious whether you might, I think we don't have street level tonight, right?
No.
Okay. I'm curious whether you might, just based on your experience, be able to comment on the concept of applying in-lu fee to projects smaller than five units, merits or demerits?
Sometimes there's a sliding scale for smaller projects, and sometimes there's a waiver, and sometimes they pay the fee. Yeah, so there's all different approaches.
You don't have a view here.
Sorry?
You don't have a view here, where the current ordinance starts at five units?
Personally, I think everyone should pay the fee. That's a policy decision.
We also got a comment from the owner of South Shore. They were very circumspect in their feedback. I think I'd be curious whether you might be able to share with us. I'm assuming they've been giving you feedback offline, and I don't know if you are ready to share that, or they're ready to share that, or they're not ready to share, obviously, but I'm curious if you might be able to enlighten us.
I don't know that there's any particular direction.
Okay.
It's very conceptual.
Okay.
I think they're just curious what's happening here.
Last question is, do you know, this is a little bit on the margins, but do you know what happened to the Hawthorne Suites conversion project that was contemplated a couple years ago?
Nothing more than was in the paper. I think they just couldn't pull the financing together.
Okay, that was my understanding as well. I think the only, the only other question I had has to do with maybe trying to, partly a question, partly a comment, has to do, I think, with understanding, I guess, the overall efficacy of some of these income tiers that we're contemplating. And so, in particular, with regard to ownership units, because with ownership, unlike with rental, I think there are a lot of numbers that occur outside of the table that we look at, right? So there's, in addition to the purchase price, there's the monthly HOA, and then in some of the developments in Alameda, we've got layered on top of that a CFD tax. And so it becomes very interesting, I think, to then think about whether you're looking at very low income or low income or moderate, how those things, for any sample project, right, stack up for people of a particular income, which, to me, kind of raises the question of, is the low-income tier or very low-income tier, but particularly the low-income tier, is that even a worthwhile product for the people who are buying it? They may enter at a particular purchase price, but then their monthly burden of the HOA, which is the same as the market rate condos or townhomes, and then the CFD tax on top of that, does it even make sense, right? So I think that was a little bit of the discussion that I had, a little bit of trouble keying into, because we don't really have visibility into how that, the finances might stack up for somebody in those income tiers. So I think seeing maybe some sample Alameda So I think seeing maybe some sample Alameda projects might be helpful for that.
I will just say, yeah, that's partly reflected in these prices. The guidelines for ownership inclusionary for the city of Alameda, there's a whole handbook, it's 25 pages, and it includes reference to these kinds of costs that need to be factored in before you set the price. But I take your point that there's still a burden, that's an every-month kind of burden.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Sue.
Thanks for the presentation and update. I just have one question on this. So, you know, with the moderate income, you know, it sounds like with the rentals, a lot of the units are sitting empty because they are more expensive than what the market rate is. Is that correct, basically?
That's our understanding.
Yeah. And looking at, I think, this, this table, that seems, seems right or kind of right, around there. Is it, is it possible to, like, just take the moderate category and say, you know, I think there's an equation, obviously, for how you set what the maximum rent is for each income level? Can you just go with, take the moderate one and say, okay, we're changing it to, we're going to lower it to make it, you know, so that it really is, you know, not that it really is, so that it becomes lower than what the market rate is, and then we'll allow people with moderate incomes to then, you know, find those units and rent them?
Yeah, I think the developer-operator would have more to say about why they don't do that.
Could you elaborate on that?
I think you can ask them. They're here.
Okay, well, that's, that's, that's all I had.
Yeah, thank you to my fellow board members. I, I think I, my questions are jumbled, but let's see. One question I had, I understood more the logic for the 15% for the recommendation for the rental, 50% at 80% AMI, because the 50% is being met by our partners at the Housing Authority, and you see a pipeline there. I'm, it's not as clear to me the reasoning behind the recommendation for the ownership inclusionary, the 15% at the split for moderate and low income. Like, are we seeing the low-income units getting leased up and traction there? And I bring it up just because I think I remember from the report, one of the recommendations being 20% at moderate. So it just seems like a big gap between what staff is recommending and what I saw in the background analysis.
Yeah. I think, again, you know, any of these would be roughly equivalent or less expensive, so they're all sort of feasible in that sense. The split in Option Four was intended to include recommendations from our Housing and Human Services Department, who, they believe that the low-income units are meeting a need and that they are feasible for some households. And so they wanted us to include that as part of the recommendation.
Okay.
And they're the closest to it in terms of leasing projects up with candidates.
Okay, got it, yeah. I just wanted to make sure, like, there was, like, that market there, I guess, if that makes sense. Got it. And then going back to the rental inclusionary, from the staff report, and here, the recommendation is 50% low income, but I also, like, saw on the table, or all of the above, right? So that's, I, I think I talked about it before, like, potential, like, a dialing option where the applicant could stay at the 50%, or they could choose 8% of very low income. So there, there's more of that flexibility. You're offering that as an option for us to consider?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I guess, also going back to the report, it's, did suggest 4% at very low and 6% low, but here you have, and that would get to the 10, and here you have 5 and 5 is the reason why, because of the TOC spreadsheet calculation?
Yeah, I think just trying to pick round numbers, it could be adjusted in so many different ways. So, yeah, 4 and 6 might be the same as 5 and 5, I don't know. It's close.
Okay, yeah. It's such a small thing, but I, I was just wondering how much of this was based off that report versus, like, this TOC calculation, which I appreciate because, like, it will lead to future funding, so if, if that's reasoning, that, that's totally fine. I just wanted to better understand the logic, so. Great. Can you go back to the slide with the ownership inclusionary, excuse me, the ownership in Lufi? I should have this in front of me. Okay, so the, like, what's the, for the forced sale right now? I, I guess I'm getting a little bit confused with, like, the cost to the, like, the burden to the developer and what that pricing would be. Is it $50 per square feet or?
Yeah, that's the idea.
Yeah.
Whereas today, again, based on a model that we've been kind of using with all the assumptions that we have to make, it's roughly $62 today.
Oh, okay.
If they provided the 4.4 and 7. With those subsidies based on that pricing. And so based on, you know, new pricing, but also just on the policy of, you know, do we emphasize fees or do we emphasize units? And just sort of the equities of rental versus ownership, these are some numbers we came up with.
Okay, got it. Yeah, thank you. I just, oh, yeah, Board Member Huh?
Yeah, yeah, your question just triggered another question in my mind. I remember reading in the staff report, there was a question, you probably easily clarify it, whether, you know, this per-square-foot charge is for either rental or for sale, it is applied to livable area, not to, like, garages and things like that.
Correct, this is the net square foot of residential.
Yeah, yeah, just thought I'd just ask that, because that came out in the question.
Okay. Okay, I think, yeah, those are all my clarifying questions. I think we could go ahead and close up, and we'll have it open to a public comment. Thank you.
If anyone online wants to speak, please raise your hand now. We have two speakers in person. First one is Andrew Rosenberg.
Good evening, Planning Board members, and thank you, Steve. I know there's been a tremendous amount of work that's put forth in this very important topic. I'm Andrew Rosenberg with Pacific Development, and over the past several years, our team has led the entitlements and the development of the Alameda Master Plan. Pacific Development delivered the launch project in 2023, which consists of 368 floor rent units, which was the first phase of the total of the Alameda Marina Master Plan. I'm here to ask the planning board to recommend the implementation of a $10 per gross square foot in Lufi as part of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. We have secured all the necessary entitlements and building permit approvals for the foundry project, which includes 260 rental units along the waterfront. And once built, this project will complete the entirety of the 801 units at the, the Master Plan Alameda Marina. And as stated in the street-level advisory report and what was mentioned shortly earlier, medium-density projects are simply not financially feasible right now in today's climate. This is due to high construction costs, large impact fees, tariffs, increased financing, high operational costs, year-over-year increased insurance, and of course, property taxes. The foundry project's location is directly on the waterfront, which, as you can imagine, makes the cost for a project such as this to have higher than a typical infill development. As a quick reference, some of these costs include, you know, seawall, bay trail, open space improvements, Clement Avenue public improvements, off-site construction, adjacent commercial parking lot improvements. There's very important environmental remeation costs associated, which includes sea-sable property as well as some city-tideland parcels. And then, you know, finally, as you can imagine, in, in Alameda, there are significant soil stabilization costs that are associated with very shallow groundwater. This project specifically cannot support an onsite BMR requirement. We've studied this countless times over the past 11 and a half months from all models, and even the current, what's being proposed in the current staff report from Options Two and Three, which was the 5% low, 5% very low, as well as a flat 8% very low income. And for the reasons I just mentioned, truly the only viable option for this project alone is an in-lufi. And we've confirmed that this project truly is financeable with a $10 gross per square foot of the residential building. This would equate to roughly $2.5 million of an in-lufi, and it is equivalent to a cost per unit, it's roughly $55,000 per unit. The foundry is truly shovel-ready. We're committing to building this very important housing project on the island, but we do need the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance revised so we can build this next spring. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mitch Ball.
Hello. Inclusionary zoning has some good and some bad. The good is that it produces housing for a portion of people who could not afford it otherwise. The bad is that it makes the financial feasibility of housing development less likely, reducing the amount of homes being constructed. This reduction of housing supply raises the cost of market raising housing higher. The recommendations within this report do a good job reducing the bad by allowing greater flexibility for developers and increasing the good by selecting affordable homes that better fit residents' needs. However, I would like to strongly encourage the addition of a fifth recommendation to change the per-unit exemption to apply to ADUs in developments of 2 to 10 units, which I acknowledge is different from my written comment, but I believe it captures the same concerns. For context, I'm someone who experiences the bad of inclusionary zoning. I make too much income to qualify for below-market-rate housing, so I must rent a market-rate one-bedroom unit within a six-unit building at $2,400 a month. My rent is this high because of the artificially constrained supply of housing due to, in part, by inclusionary zoning. And to an extent, I am okay with this. It's reasonable for the middle class to pay for a little more to help out those less fortunate. What I am not okay with is that people wealthier than me aren't contributing. While ADUs and missing-middle housing of 2 to 10 units can modestly increase density in the limited land available in the Bay Area and provide housing affordable to the middle class at market rates, single-unit housing does neither. The only people who can afford to buy a new single-unit home in Alameda are those in the top 1% of income or those who've received a large inheritance. If only the wealthiest people in Alameda can afford single-unit homes, the least dense form of housing, why are these homes exempt? Unfortunately, I believe I know the answer to this question. One of the wealthiest people on earth, Warren Buffett, has brought attention to the growing source of growing income and wealth inequality by announcing that he pays a lower effective tax rate than his secretary. The reason why the rich keep getting richer is because they have influenced government so that the wealth transfers from the middle class to them. This issue does not just exist because billionaires have influenced the federal government, it also happens here in Alameda because millionaires have influenced the municipal government. The majority of Alamitans do not own homes, and yet traditionally, most who have come to publicly comment on planning board and city council meetings are single-unit homeowners who benefit from an artificially constrained housing supply, which raises the value of their homes. This is why the first inclusionary zoning policy in 1974 excluded single-unit developments decades before the term "missing middle" was even coined. However, this municipal government still has the opportunity to be fair to all Alamitans. In addition to the four proposed recommendations that address some of the flaws of the current inclusionary zoning policy, I urge you to address the largest and most significant flaw and add a fifth recommendation to remove this loophole for the wealthy, or else remain complicit in the government-sponsored transfer of wealth from the middle class to the wealthy. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no more speakers.
Okay, and with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Bring it back to the board for discussion.
Anyone? Board Member Huh?
Sure. I'll offer my comments. First of all, I want to commend the consultant and staff for a lot of excellent work, and, and it really shows from the, you know, being part of the committee, from the, from the initial discussions to the current proposal, shows a lot of thought and considers all the pros and cons of, it's a complex issue, it's never one right answer, every city deals with it differently, and cities have different economics also. For instance, that ABAG number is a Bay Area-wide number, and generally, inclusionary housing requirements are higher for, for more affluent communities versus where construction costs are higher versus, say, outlying communities where construction costs are lower. So I could see that's a minimum, but that shouldn't apply universally across all communities in the Bay Area, so I just wanted to mention that. I want to first acknowledge, that I should have acknowledged first, I did meet, wanted to disclose that I did meet with the developer of the Alamina, Alameda Marina Project, Pacific Development, so, and we discussed the potential impact of their inclusionary housing recommendations on their project. I, I think the current ordinance has gone a long way at addressing some of the issues or the problems with existing ordinance. You know, it, it really, one of the bottom-line criteria that I know we were using was keeping the fiscal impact of, given the economic times, not necessarily making these projects feasible by lowering the fees, because as you mentioned, Nexus cities show there's, even you've eliminated all inclusion housing requirements, projects, most projects probably not feasible. So that shouldn't be the goal, but the goal should be at least not make the requirements more onerous than they currently are. And so there, but having said that, there's been a lot of positive direction to kind of adapt the ordinance to distinguish the differences between rental housing and ownership housing, like, for rental housing, eliminating the moderate-income category, because in most cases it's above or slightly below what market-rate rents are. So to me, it, I think the recommendation to just focus on very low and low-income rental units makes total sense from a market standpoint. And then conversely, the requirement for very low-income ownership units is just very onerous, you know, when you calculate in the cost our homeowner association dues and utility costs, which all gets, gets used to set the affordable housing price for ownership units, it just requires a huge subsidy, and, and many of these homeowners have a hard time even qualifying for financing even with assistance. So focusing on ownership housing on moderate and low income in that direction, I think, makes a lot of sense. That, that fine tuning of the ordinance makes a lot of sense to me. I also see that the flexibility that's being proposed in the ordinance makes a lot of sense, including calculating the Lufi as an option for projects larger than nine units makes a lot of sense, most cities do allow for that. Coming up with the cluster or the off-site option to meet the inclusion housing requirements, I think makes a lot of sense. I think it's a matter of coming up with criteria, better criteria to define what that is, especially if it's delegated to the city manager to make that decision. City council might, actually, some cities actually require those projects to go all the way up to the council, but I, you know, to me, as long as the criteria is set pretty clearly, so that the city manager can make a, a not, you know, it'll be subjective, but maybe as, as objective of a decision as possible. A couple of comments about feasibility, you know, Nexus studies have really emphasized that impact fees and inclusion housing requirements. You know, NEXA studies have really emphasized that impact fees and inclusion housing requirements, although they have a huge impact or some, you know, significant impact on development, the current, the reason why residential development is not being built today is really driven by economics. You know, the construction costs, interest rates, maybe, you know, who knows with tariffs? That's increasing construction costs, the increases in labor costs, financing, increases in vacancy, rent decreases, land cost increases. All those factors combined is currently impacting the feasibility. So when someone is saying, oh, if you just lower the impact fees or inclusion requirement requirements, then projects can be feasible. I mean, that's just not the case. So to me, when I looked at inclusionary housing ordinance, I looked at the future that at some point in time, projects will hopefully be feasible. And I still think it's really critical that a city really put places priority at providing very low and low-income units. At the same time, I'm also open, given the hard economic times, on a case-by-case basis, but not by ordinance. If there's a project that might say is a trade-off, that provides significant community benefits or some city infrastructure arrangements, that maybe there's some flexibility that can be negotiated to adjust the inclusion requirements for that project as a trade-off, you know, but I don't think it should just be reduced just for natural reasons. It needs to be for some legitimate trade-off reasons. So, and that could be handled either through adjustment to their affordable housing agreement or their development agreement, whatever might apply. There's a couple of things that I jotted down that would be good to look into that I didn't see addressed. Maybe it has been addressed, but it wasn't addressed in the staff report. There was mention of setting criteria for the cluster housing development. I totally agree with that. It'd be good to see what those criteria are. You explained the feasibility study that will be further done to set what the inclusion housing fee would be. I really strongly support that. I do agree with the general policy direction of setting the INLU fee for rental units a little bit higher than the cost of building the units because I think we prefer, at least I prefer, to see the inclusionary units as rental units or as the inclusion requirement. However, for for-sale housing, you know, having the fee a little bit below the cost of building the for-sale unit does provide incentive for INLU fees that can be then provided to nonprofits to build affordable housing projects. So whatever that fee is, that general policy direction is something I support. The other thing that I think is worth looking into is for the cluster housing option, what would be the equivalent if someone wanted to buy up an existing housing project and rehab the units and dedicate them rent-restricted for 99 years, you know? What is the equivalent for that? I mean, right now, we're talking about all new construction, but I think there's a lot of validity about for rehab units that can actually produce a large number of very low-income units. I like offering options for, rather than adopting one, like for the rental, I think the staff recommendation, I believe, is like 15%. I like the idea of offering the ability to do, you know, five and 10, say, which is the way how it works out is like two moderate-income, two low-income units is about the equivalent to one very low income. So allowing that proportional trade-off, I think, makes a lot of sense. And similar with the for-sale projects. Though, based on your analysis, the for-sale project, the 5% very low, no, 5% low and 10% moderate is still below the current ordinance requirement. So I agree with staff that that, using that as the baseline for the for-sale units makes sense, and then allowing options to tear off of that. I do, I am sympathetic to what the speaker raised about... First of all, I should ask, are ADU units subject to inclusionary housing requirements?
No, they're not.
Okay, okay, good. I didn't think so. But I am, I have seen studies that show that smaller projects, you know, I don't know what the right size is, four units or six units or below, tend to be more economically challenging to build. And in Alameda, where we have a fair number of potential small-lot subdivisions, maybe thinking, do we want to make smaller projects having the inclusionary housing or the INLU fee a little bit less than, say, a larger project? That generally, you know, in the days when projects were economically feasible, generally the more challenging projects to build were those smaller projects. So anyway, so those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? A board member, Wang?
Yeah, so thank you. Thank you to staff for doing all the work this year. It's been really interesting to see this evolve. Really interesting tonight to hear, I think, the topic of feasibility come up a number of times. I know it's also in the street-level report. But I do think, you know, as we bring this work to city council, I think we should take a position as to what is the remit, you know, collectively as we open up the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. So on paper, I think what we're doing with this update is, one, we're complying with state law, right? We're providing for INLU and off-site housing options. We're aligning with housing need. I think this was a lot of the discussion around low income versus very low income. And we're aligning with the TOC program, which is kind of one of the factors setting this 15% benchmark. I think one of the things that we are not doing here, you know, in the work that we've done collectively this year or discussed tonight, is addressing feasibility. So I think if we, if that's our position, I think it should be packaged up and noted explicitly in kind of the policy goals and discussion around this work, that we are very much not touching feasibility. And so everyone should be super clear that $25 a foot, $50 a foot, $35 a foot has nothing to do with feasibility because it's not going to move the needle and nothing pencils. I think we need to be super clear about that because we need to make an explicit decision whether we are trying to make units feasible or we are just not dealing with that, right? And that matters because I think we've been in a moment for several years now where a number of housing types, and I think, you know, mid-rise rental being a kind of bread-and-butter housing type in the Bay Area, has not penciled. And so for us as a city body to sit here and kind of make a decision, well, we're just going to punt that and see if, you know, see if it kind of solves itself? That's a decision, right? And another decision is to say, well, as long as we're working on the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, let us see what we can do about feasibility. Maybe it's not the ordinance itself, so maybe it's more along the lines of what board member Hau was saying. Maybe, you know, in my notes, I had sort of thought maybe there's a parallel package that goes along with this Inclusionary Housing Ordinance and, you know, call it some kind of housing economic relief package that temporarily provides some sort of impact fee relief against our standard ordinance, which we think of as like, these are our evergreen requirements. And then the second package is about, hey, we've got a 24-month temporary package. It's going to automatically sunset. But you know what the trade-off of that is? Is we get, you know, 250 units, we get 350 units, we get 400 units, and we get those units delivered in the next two years. Because, you know, and I met with the developer as well, and one of the conversation points that I shared with them from another inclusionary housing update in San Francisco is we, you know, we had these kind of staff-level conversations. And one refrain that came up a number of times was, you know, 15% of zero is still zero. And so I think that we have a responsibility here to see units through. And so we may, we might not have control over construction costs and interest rates and financing costs and land costs, but we are looking at a lever here that we can control, which is the inclusionary housing requirement. And so while I'm not prepared, I think, to talk about, I'm in a similar boat as board member Hau. I'm not prepared to talk about a sort of evergreen change to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that's going to permanently set a really low standard. What I do want to inject into the conversation is, like I said, some kind of package that does consider our current economic climate and our goals of producing housing in the housing element. You know, I think something that you said, Steve, that was interesting is that you had seen a number of cities, you know, lower fees at kind of down points in the market, and we have this kind of, there's a kind of art to that, right? Because government takes a little bit to kind of catch up to the fact that we're in a down market, we're in a down economy, and things haven't been getting built in a while, which is definitely true. But what is, what is an example of that that we are looking at today? That we are sitting here, you know, and after 11 months of working on this Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, we have in front of us in black and white that a bunch of projects are not feasible, and we are saying out loud that we are not going to work on that. I think we can do better.
Thank you. Any other comments? A board member, Sahiba?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for the discussion. I as well met with Andrew just before this meeting just to have a short conversation. I just want to step back for a second and think of the lens that we're looking at housing in, before we get to this topic, which is the sense of creating more housing. At the end of the day, that's the charge from the state. And as we know, the more supply you have in the system, typically that creates a different financial structure of rents and for-sale units, meaning through supply, you can gain affordability. Of course, it's not going to solve all the affordability levels, but if you have no supply, you have the challenge that you will continue to face. And so I'm seeing what we've come up with in this policy recommendation. And it feels to me like we're suggesting things that are moving the needle in a different direction than creating more housing. And so I think there's two ways to look at it. There's the theoretical of, in an ideal situation, where do you want to go? And then there's the practical or the reality of the situation that we're in and where do we want to go? And I think it is good to look at it long-term. Of course, we're going to face different cycles and bumps in the road. But when we do look at it long-term, there, you know, what was interesting about some of the other ways that jurisdictions were tackling this as far as where they were headed with the costs for the INLU fees or if the INLU fee was a requirement and then the inclusionary was secondary. To me, that's a choice that the developers should make. Like, we should try to pull those things as close together as possible because, like we heard, there's different circumstances on different sites that require different cost structures for the development to actually occur. If you're on the water's edge or if you're in a site that needs, you know, soil remediation, there's all sorts of challenges that one can face. But this sort of nuanced look at this flat fee is where we're going to go with how you eventually administer the overall cost of your project kind of negates all the uniqueness of the project. And there might be different demands where a project, it may make more sense to pay the INLU fee because then you collect that money and do a project that, you know, an affordable housing developer is able to manage than someone who's doing market-rate housing and trying to manage it within that system. So I think, and I'm not sure what the right answer is to thread the needle, but it feels like to me that one can step back and maybe tie some of this to overall costs and not specific to a dollar per square foot of livable space or unit costs because it's, at the end of the day, it's the overall cost that everyone's trying to manage. And if you're looking at it from that lens, you may come up with a different way of thinking about, and it could still be equitable, I'm not saying it wouldn't, but if someone's just building 50 units, but their dollar-per-square-foot cost is a lot more in one location than someone building, you know, 100 units in another location, the, they're, they're still getting penalized, like proportionally higher than the person who went and found a site that required less investment on the overall strategy of developing it. So I guess I'm just wanting us, and I know there's been a lot of work put into this. I just, I'm just trying to figure out, is there a better way to get to a place where someone has the structure of cost certainty through the knowledge of what it's going to mean to look to develop on that piece of property? And then manage to that percentage? Because if it's to a percentage, it seems more clear to me, just like, you know, tax rates, for example. And I guess you could have tiered stuff, but I don't want to even get into that level of complexity. But in a sense, a rate can help clarify specifically what your costs are going in. So as you move your own needle of like, hey, I've got to spend more on this, you know exactly what that burden's going to be. And it's not going to force you to take a different look at unit mix and take a different look at unit size because you're just going to try to produce what's most efficient and best potentially for the market and what you're trying to, what you're trying to develop. So anyways, that's somewhere where I think, just what I'm seeing currently in the report, I'm not sure if it's moving us in the direction where we're going to be promoting housing in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Board member Adisa or vice president Adisa?
Thank you. Thank you for all the work and all the comments from my board member, fellow board member. I completely agree with board members Sahiba and Wong that somehow there needs to be, I mean, I agree with the recommendations in the report. I think they're good recommendations. But I'm wondering if there is a way or a caveat that we can add for which, you know, you have to take into account how the developments are going to be possible to be built. And I don't know if that's just like an additional recommendation or an additional comment in which there is the review. And maybe there needs to be like a case-by-case kind of review somehow because I understand the comments from the developer of, you know, there are certain costs that are different in different locations. I don't understand the percentage that board member Sahiba is suggesting, but I do agree that ideally, we come up with a way in which the feasibility is taken into account or considered somehow on the requests that we are making on the inclusionary housing.
Thank you. No comments? All right. Well, yeah, huge thanks to my fellow board members. I think this was, you know, really great insights and input. I agree, I don't want to discount all the work that's been done this past year. I really agree with board I really agree with Board Member Hong that, you know, this was a collective team effort and the recommendations are moving directionally in the right way in terms of providing more options on the table. I, like, that's, I think, the, the drumbeat that I'll keep on beating, over and over, flexibility is, is key here. So, and before I go further, I also met with the developer, Alameda Marina, so just wanted to disclose that. So I am in support of the 99-year lease. I am in support of the cluster options and I appreciate like the, the suggestion of having that for like preservation and rehab. I support opting into some kind of fee. I think just not having like the hard math about it and obviously we're still like early, it sounds like early in the process, but just feeling more confident that is not going to be excessive in a burden. It sounds like it is potentially, just like from the back of the math envelope that we did, like maybe 25 and 50 is too high, but that might, I, I agree, we want the in lieu fees and I think the right number is like the question mark. I like the concept of the dialing options, like providing again, more options. And my ears perked when we talked about potentially flexibility for certain cases when there's a community benefit or some economic package. I kind of want to go back to my like, I concept, the concept I threw out there of like it being tied to the economic state that we're in. So I don't know what that looks like. I was like starting to look back at the report. It did mention something about the construction cost index. So, you know, how do we take into account where we are now in the market so we can deliver more housing and affordable housing? Because otherwise we're working against ourselves, it seems. So I, I just want to echo the sentiments of my fellow board members on that theme here, like what's the ultimate outcome that we're working towards? And then the small project thing was interesting, like I really appreciate the public comments on that point. And I think I'm aligned more with Board Member Hong, like how do we think about the fees at a rate that wouldn't curb like small infill development? And how do we right-size that? So maybe, maybe it's, I'm asking for like more insights into that. So I do appreciate, you know, stuff like, hey, we should, everyone should do their fair share and like, what does that look like when it comes to like an emerging developer and like the type of small infill projects that we want to see in our community? So, yeah, I think those are high level, my thoughts, my takeaways. And again, many thanks to the public for your insights and yes, Board Member Hong.
Finish your thought.
Oh, no, I was just saying thanks. That's all. Yeah.
Yeah, if I may, I just wanted to, I meant to talk about feasibility, which I totally, the, the comments regarding, you know, the fact that there's not, hasn't been a feasibility study done and that's certainly very critical. And I think the rationale for not doing one currently is that even if you did want to show that all projects are under water, so it wouldn't really show much. However, one thing I will say, having, having done these feasibility studies is the sensitivity, every project, if, that's what several board members mentioned, it varies quite a bit. You know, when you do a performa, you know, some projects, they've owned the land for 30 years, it's fully cleared, so they don't have a high residual land values, that's not a big factor. Some people self-finance depending on the housing type. So these projects vary quite a bit as far as feasibility. The challenge for staff is to try to craft an ordinance where you build in all of these possible factors, makes it very difficult to administer and then it raises quite honestly legal issues like, you know, why is one being treated first, you know? So how some cities have done and it could be a consideration, because I'm sensitive to that issue is that, you know, some cities entered into development agreements or something equivalent where you, you kind of realize this particular project, you know, maybe because it's more challenging for whatever reason feasibility wise, you might acknowledge that, you know? But that's part of a development agreement, usually requires some trade-offs. But I just want to, you know, speak up the difficulty of trying to accommodate every nuance of a project regarding feasibility. It's very difficult when you try to craft an ordinance as fair and equitable across the board. It's not perfect, but it's almost like you have to settle somewhere in the middle. I just didn't want to throw that in.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, there's only so much we could do to make every developer applicant happy. Is it like, how do we provide enough options? So hopefully one of them will work out.
But it's something that I totally agree that needs to be, you know, carefully thought of for each project.
Good stuff.
Well, I was just going to say, you took the words right out of my mouth. I, I wanted to acknowledge that a lot of our projects, especially our cluster projects, are based on a development agreement. And so there's an acknowledged sort of trade-off, particularly where it's public land and so, or we have some engagement along the shoreline or at Alameda Point. And then other projects don't have a development agreement. And so we're, we're sort of, in some ways, really targeting projects that are somehow the average typical project, which is rare, that there, you're going to only have an average project. So acknowledging all that variation, I think development agreements are a big tool in Alameda and will continue to be. And I guess, you know, we're, we're already heading into our mid-cycle review on our housing element. So we're going to have to sort of account for how things are going and what we might do differently. So this was actually an implementation, implementation measure from that first housing element in 2023. So here we are, sort of already thinking ahead to the ups and downs of the cycle and, and what more we can be doing.
Great. Yes, Board Member Wang?
Sorry, in my excitement, I neglected some of my own comments. But I, since Board Member Hong just spoke up, I did want to say that I, I, I agree that I, it seems that we're very much against this conundrum of wanting to deliver housing and therefore, you know, wanting to deliver potentially bespoke solutions on a kind of development by development basis versus having, you know, a single ordinance or a single package that addresses most of our, our development or housing needs. And I suppose that conundrum, I think, is, is something for staff to think about and, and address. My point was in reviewing all the work that has been put into this ordinance update, it wasn't super clear to me, I think, that we were taking a hands-off approach on feasibility until kind of closer to the end. And so I think, just to echo my point from, from earlier, I think we need to be super explicit about that because if, if we do, if we do go out and say, hey, you know, here's a lot of important and interesting updates that we're making to the ordinance, but by the way, we're not touching feasibility and by the way, most projects aren't feasible right now. I think that does prompt us and our decision makers to, to at least ask, well, why not? Right? And when are we going to do that? Or alternatively, we can start doing it now and start thinking about it now. So that's just reprising the comment from earlier and, and also just kind of agreeing with what Board Member Hong was saying and, and kind of how you solve like a bunch of complex problems that have their own complex issues with a single ordinance. I also wanted to say, I think a number of board members said this, and I think Board Member Hong was the first to say it, that I also support having the, the many kind of income mix options be baked into the ordinance from the get-go. I think offering that flexibility to, to developers couldn't hurt. And, and we, you know, we don't know what scenarios, operational or, or financing that they may see that we don't see in our, in our very simple static models here. And then the last comment that I wanted to make, that I neglected to make earlier was to just speak a little bit, I kind of challenged, I guess, the, the policy direction, I think, that, that, that you mentioned earlier, Steve, around automatically, I think, preferencing onsite units versus in lieu. And I, I guess to, to speak to that, I, I'd like to draw a couple, say hypothetical or theoretical scenarios. So I think in, in one theoretical scenario, let's say we've got a really hot market. We've got a couple, let's say on the island, we've got a couple mid-rise rental buildings going, they're under construction, things are going really well on the market, in the market. And, and at the same time, let's pretend the city had very limited land for, for constructing new projects. And so what the developers say of these two developer, two developments, they say, well, we much prefer the in lieu fee, right? We'll, we'll just fee out, we'll pay the city. And the city says, oh, great, we're going to take that in lieu fee, we're going to put it in a fund, we're going to develop more affordable housing with it. And then they realize, hey, we don't have any land, there's no land here, we can't. So we're just accruing all this, all this fee and we can't develop affordable housing. So I think that would be exactly the scenario where you would want to say, well, let's, let's hitch our affordable housing wagon to the market rate developments that are actually happening and we want to kind of disincentivize in lieu fee so that we can actually produce affordable housing in projects that are actually being delivered. So I think, I think to draw a different scenario, well, first of all, I'm, I'm not sure that we are as land constrained in Alameda. I think we have a bunch of sites that, that we can deliver affordable housing on. I think we have a bunch of master plans that have been identified, either in the pipeline or as potential sites in the housing element, right? So we don't really have that kind of land constraint. And we've been in a kind of a down cycle in the market for a good few years now. And I think at the down cycle of the market, you kind of find all the cranes have disappeared, right? You look around and you see, hey, there's one or two projects being built around in the Bay Area. Oh, they happen to be affordable housing projects. Why? Because those aren't, those, those have a different, a sort of counter cyclical or non-cyclical source of funding, right? They, they get grants from the state, from regional agencies, they assemble grants here and there. So they're not kind of subject to kind of the, the ups and downs of the private markets in the same way. And so we've, we're in this moment where we have a bunch of pri- market rate housing projects, they're stuck in the mud, they're not moving forward, you have 100% affordable housing projects being delivered. So I kind of question whether it makes sense to have a housing ordinance that, that very much disincentivizes the in lieu fee? Because that in lieu fee, as the street level report identified during down markets, can be paying for pre-development for affordable housing. The reason I brought up Hawthorne Suites was, I think, you know, our impression was that, that project failed because it couldn't find the funding. That in lieu fee could have funded the Hawthorne Suites conversion. It could be going to, to gap fund other affordable housing projects on other sites in the city of Alameda. So why are we disincentivizing the in lieu fee is the question I want to raise.
And I could just clarify. So there, we were trying to balance that between the rental and the ownership as well. So there's, there, there is a sort of a push and pull on how that plays out. So acknowledging maybe we disincentivize one and incentivize the other and we see how that plays out. But yeah, I hear you.
Yes, Board Member Sahiba?
Yeah, I just had a follow-up question on that, on the disincentivizing versus incentivizing. Because we haven't done, well, a feasibility study, I'm curious, do we know where their demand is? Or are we trying to create supply in a specific direction by modifying these fees? Because we know where the demand needs to go? Or what, what's, what's the goal?
My sense is we're pretty balanced between rental and ownership in terms of the projects that are both entitled and being built. I think there's a little bit of a legacy of projects that already put all the infrastructure in, so they're just sort of going ahead with the first phase and now they're taking a little break. And we're seeing now, okay, well, how do we get that second phase going? Because they've already spent the money on the streets and the pipes and everything. So I think that's the hang-up is the sunk costs and, and now seeing rents and prices and construction costs change in the past five years. So I, I think it's balanced in terms of the, the market rental versus ownership.
Any other comments or questions or input so staff could firm up their recommendation? And can you remind us the next steps? Sorry.
Right, so we're going to the city council next week for their update and feedback. They haven't heard this item yet, as you've heard it three times now. So we wanted to make sure that they got a, a chance to weigh in before we start drafting an ordinance and, and doing any further study we need to do.
Great, yeah, Board Member Hong?
Yeah, question for staff, you know, we've fired you a lot, I think, really rich comments tonight from all of us. I'm just wondering, how will our comments be summarized and presented to the council?
Well, at this point orally. And so we'll do our best. Yeah. The video will be online.
Nice to see them somehow summarized in writing.
Yeah.
Just present it verbally, maybe expanded minutes or something, you know?
Yeah, or like maybe the, the PowerPoint presentation, like a
Sure.
Yeah, slide of our feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I think there's some really good comments that we've shared tonight that would be good for the council to hear.
Yeah, I'll make sure I do that.
Okay, great. All right. And with that, we'll go ahead and close agenda item five. Thank you to everyone.
Is there any?
Yeah, we're good.
No further comments.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to staff communications. Yeah, 6A, 6B?
6A and 6B, I don't have anything. And no public comment on 6A or 6B?
Okay. And with that, we'll close item six and go to board communications. Seeing none? Any public comments for that? Nope. Okay. Non-agenda public comments, anyone can speak for three minutes for something that wasn't on the agenda tonight? Seeing no comments? All right, it's 8:48 and we are adjourned. Thank you.